I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, April 13th Dublin City Council meeting. Good evening and welcome to our first ever virtual Dublin City Council meeting. We're living in extraordinary times. Both the state of Ohio and the city of Dublin have declared states of emergency. The Ohio legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to have virtual meetings. Appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government. For the duration of the stay at home order, we will be holding council meetings online and live streaming those meetings on YouTube. You can access the live stream on the city's website. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to city council by our Director of Communications and Public Information. We want to accommodate public participation and comment to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on public business, but please refrain from making any inappropriate comments. This is not a perfect system, but we will do our best in these difficult times and we appreciate your patience. Anne, would you please call the roll?
I guess Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yeah.
Ms. Aludo?
Yeah.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Keeler?
Here.
Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Here. Thank you. And we have asked Homer Rogers to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening, so please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Homer. Okay, as with all of our city council meetings, we will open with the opportunity for any citizen to make a public comment prior to the beginning of our meeting for those items that are not on this evening's agenda. Anne, have we received any? Or Sue, have we received any public comment?
We have not received any public comment via our email in the clerk's office.
And Sue? Sue, have you received any comments via the live stream? We're not hearing from Sue, so I will continue to ask her, and if there is public comment, we will go ahead and take that at whatever point that comes online.
No public comment.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Okay. We have a consent agenda this evening. There are several items listed on the consent agenda, meeting minutes, and some legislative liquor permits. Anne?
Miss, we have not received any comment on these items.
And Sue? Okay, I take it that she has not received any. Is there any council member who would like to request removal from the consent agenda, any of these items? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move.
I can't hear.
Very good. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Aludo? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, we have a second reading ordinance 09-20 amended.
This is amending section 150.231 of the City of Dublin Codified Ordinances Regarding Property Maintenance.
Very good. And there was some changes to this. Jenny, do you have some information for us?
I do. Good evening, mayor and members of council. As you mentioned, this is ordinance 09-20, and it has been amended. This was introduced on March 16th of this year, and as part of that review, council members had raised some concerns about an exemption for structures built before March 1st, 1959. So following that introduction, planning in consultation with the Law Director's Office has removed that section from the ordinance and will utilize our current enforcement procedures to uphold property maintenance for structures that are historic. So with that amendment, we are recommending approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Great. So there was some discussion about unintended consequences. I felt like the adjustments here resolved the issues that we talked about on first reading. Is everyone else fairly comfortable with that? Yes, Jane?
I am. I think that the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code is really the upgrade we need to give us some teeth for some of the problems that we're having. And I did talk with Jenny about this earlier, and the intent here is to get this under our code and then take any problem properties we might have and beta test them against the code to see if there's any holes that maybe we need to address or any additional ordinances we need to think about in order to make sure that we we create the value and maintenance that the community wants. But I think this is going to go a long way. It has quite a bit of teeth to it.
Any other comments?
You know, while we're looking at this, I'd like to have the Public Services Committee look at 153.178, the architectural review section, which applies to, right now applies to the Architectural Review District downtown, but I'd like to see it possibly apply to the city in general and just have them take a look at it because we're getting a lot more renters and of course, as we know, people, landlords sometimes don't put that much effort in maintaining property, so and that means painting roofs, landscaping driveways. So I'd just like to make a suggestion that perhaps we look at expanding that over the city. That's a future committee action, but I just thought it's a good time to discuss this right now.
Great. Yeah, we have some of those committee meetings coming up. I think we're going to be talking about that committee meeting schedule here towards the end of our meeting, so we can certainly place that on the future agenda. Thanks, John. Any other comments with respect to this? Okay. Anne, have we received any public comment?
We have not received any public testimony on this item.
Great. And Sue, have we received any via the web?
Mayor, this is Dana. Sue had to back out of the meeting and try to come back in. So she had a technical difficulty. If we need to, we could pick back up comments a little bit later.
Great. If you could send her, you know, send her a note, and if there are comments, we can sort of... Oh, hello, Sue. Any public comment on ordinance 09-20 amended?
No public comments, and I apologize for the internet disruption.
Well, it's going to require some flexibility, so that's just the way it's going to be. Okay. Hearing no additional discussion, is there a motion on the floor?
Moved.
In a second?
Second.
Very good. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. That'll take us to our first reading portion.
I didn't vote.
My apologies.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Fox.
We'll get there. I promise. We'll hang together and we'll get there. Okay, that brings us up to first readings, ordinances, ordinance 10-20.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020.
Is there an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, John. Mr. Stifler, have a report from you?
You do. Thank you. Good evening, members of council. This ordinance contains the following appropriations. Section 1 contains an appropriation for $35,000 to support the accrued leave reserve fund. As the memo referenced, this fund saw an unusual amount of spending in 2019, and as a result, the fund balance was lower than estimated to begin 2020. Section 2 contains appropriations for the hotel motel tax fund. This section contains an appropriation for $9,000 to cover the city's payment to the Bridge Park NCA. This payment is based on a percentage of 2019 hotel motel tax revenues. It also contains an appropriation for 112,500 related to activities associated with the Dublin Irish Festival. This appropriation is proceeding at this time because the next supplemental ordinance will not likely occur until June, and actions taken to support these appropriations need to occur prior to that timeframe. The appropriation of these funds allows the city to be ready to proceed when a decision is made, but does not obligate the city to make these expenditures should they not be necessary. Section 3 contains appropriations for the capital improvement fund. Of the 142,525 appropriations being requested to allow for grant reimbursement, the city has received for the share program. This part of the appropriation is fully offset by reimbursement grants. A $6 million appropriation for the council additional addition building is also requested at this time. This appropriation does not represent the final decision from council before proceeding on this matter. In May, the contract for the project will be brought before council for approval, and at that time, a decision on how to proceed will occur. Appropriating the fundy at this time is necessary as the appropriation must be in place prior to the approval of the contract, and the next supplemental ordinance is not scheduled until June. Additionally, with this project appropriated as intended during the 2019 and 2020 CIPs, staff will continue to evaluate the capital improvement fund and the capital budget to appropriately respond to the COVID-19 emergency. Sections 4 and 7 of the ordinance contain language to allow for the repayment of advances to the general fund that occurred in December of 2019 to finance two debt-funded projects at that time. The bond proceeds to reimburse the general fund for these advances were received by the city on April 2nd. Section 5 appropriates the transfers between TIF funds required to support the Corners Development Agreement as approved in ordinance 69-19 in December 2019. And finally, sections 6 and 7 unappropriate money for a debt-funded sewer project that will not be proceeding in 2020 and will be reevaluated for inclusion in future years, as well as the repayment of an advance from the capital improvement fund from the Ireland Place TIF that will instead be repaid in future years when projected revenues are received. Section 8 contains an appropriation for the cores from an agency fund. This appropriation is necessary because of the timing related to the cores board decision and the city's operating budget. Thank you for consideration of these appropriations. Staff are recommending approval at the second hearing on April 27th, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Matt. I really appreciate that. I'd like to reiterate something that Matt said very well, but I just sometimes hearing it a second time. These are appropriations. These are not expenditures, and as you can see in the last two sections, there are unappropriations as well as appropriations here, and so I just want to make sure that everyone that might be watching this from the community, this isn't a scheduling of an event, or this isn't a scheduling of dollars to be spent. This is appropriations because fiscal municipal government funding works very differently than residential funding. We can only spend money out of certain buckets, if you will. So this is just putting money in buckets that can be removed from that bucket, either back into our general revenue fund or some other fund, or it can be used to exercise a contract, which we see many of these doing. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Matt said it quite well, but I wanted to make sure that everyone heard that. That being said, comments from council? Andy?
So Matt and Chris, thank you for clarifying the difference between appropriation and, I guess, a commitment to spend the money. I guess the question I would have is in section 3, the construction on New City Hall. What are our current obligations in terms of contracts that have been signed? I know that the city building that we plan to sell, that's been delayed a bit. So I guess my question is, how far down the line are we on actually spending this $6.1 million?
I think Megan might be best suited to answer that. I know that there was some conversation. Hello, Megan.
Hello.
Want to answer some of those in terms of where we are, what we've spent, how far down the pipeline we are presently?
I'd be happy to. So, good evening, members of council. We do have two contracts that have been executed for the renovations of the 5555 perimeter building, so those renovations were accomplished to move the city hall into that facility. Those are the two contracts that we have that are in place. We have the architect's contract that's in place to complete the design of the council chambers addition, and we have an owner's rep contract, but we currently don't have a contract in place for the construction of the addition. There are some work activities that are included in the contracts that we currently have in place. So there's a little bit of work, such as landscaping, parking lot work, things like that, that would be wrapped up depending on how we were to proceed with guaranteed maximum price contract number three. And currently, we do plan to present that contract to council in the second meeting in May.
So we've got roughly a month or so to, I don't want to say drag our feet, but if it were my money that I was spending, I'd be doing my best to drag my feet and push things out as long as I can with all this uncertainty. Small mini recession, labor costs could go down. That could be better for us. I'm just, I guess, concerned that if we can, to try to kick the can down the road as far as we can. That's all.
And Andy, I think that probably will be some of the first discussions we have as a finance committee, but Dana's got some comments too. So Dana, please.
Well, I just wanted, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to add that the renovation of the existing building has been ongoing for several months. In fact, that move is happening this week. So want to make sure the public understands that portion of this work, at least for that building, is complete, and then the folks from the development building will move over to the to the existing or the previous, rather, city hall. It's really the addition of the council chambers which will be in question, and and you're absolutely right, Councilmember Keeler. We can, and I'll speak to this a bit later this evening as we advance down the road a little bit here on estimate and understanding more of the impact of this pandemic crisis will, you know, be able to better answer the question on when to go forward.
Okay, I think maybe Jane, or Kathy, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thanks very much, and I wanted to thank Matt because although we don't have a presentation up on the screen tonight in the materials with this appropriations request, Matt also gave to us some background on where we stand in terms of general fund balance, construction fund balance, and a variety of other things. So to Andy's question or point earlier, one of the things I so appreciate is that when these requests come before us, there's the financial standing of where we are, the implications of that, and that is an important element. So I appreciate that, Matt, and with the addition of the bond funding that came in, the general fund balance is in a strong position, which will be incredibly helpful for us as we move forward. So just wanted to share that along with a lot of these appropriations, again, not seeing it on the screen tonight. We're also looking at the financial schedules that look at the balances and the implications. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Matt.
Other questions? Christina, please.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to piggyback on that just a little bit, Kathy, because you're absolutely right, and thank you for sharing your questions with us and Matt's answers. But I think what's also important for the public to understand is that Dana and Matt are keeping a very close tally and understanding on how this pandemic is affecting the city financially. All along the way, we continue to get those financial health reports, and all of that will feed into the conversations that we have about different types of projects as we move forward. So I think that's a really good point that you're making, and I just wanted to sort of dovetail in this sort of constant feedback that we're getting from staff about where we are with our financial prognosis along the way.
Very good. Anyone else? Matt, I have one question about section 6 in the Ireland Place. So we're unappropriating $14,000. If I read this correctly, the scheduled payment this year was going to be 28, almost $29,000. Is that correct?
That is correct. There was a border revision decision that knocked the service payment revenue down for that TIF, so the estimated revenue did not materialize to repay that advance in full this year. It will materialize before the TIF ends, though, so it's a delay, but not a deferment of that payment.
So if I do the math close, we will receive approximately $15,000 or just shy of $15,000 on that, and there will be $14,000 remaining to be repaid on that TIF prior to 2024. So we'll have four years to collect the outstanding $14,000 on the TIF.
That's all correct.
Okay, very good. Okay. Anne, have we received any public comment?
Have we received any testimony via our email?
And Sue, have we via the web?
No comments on the web.
Very good. Well, this will be scheduled for second reading on April 27th. Right? Which brings us to ordinance 11-20.
Adopting and enacting a supplement S47 to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Dublin, Ohio.
And an introduction? Thank you, Mr. Reiner, I believe that was. Jennifer Radler has a report for us, so please, Jennifer.
Good evening, council members. The city's codifier, American Legal Publishing, prepares code supplements several times a year that reflect updated state and local legislation. This is primarily a housekeeping measure, and the supplement includes legislation adopted by city council through December 30th, 2019, and state legislation through July 30th of 2019. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance at the second reading on April 27th, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions or comments from council? Andy? Mr. Keeler, yes?
So I don't know if this is a material error or oversight, but the, I think it's maybe the first page in, there's a list of administration by name. Don Agos is on there, and Jenny Roush is still listed as Director of Planning Interim.
Right. Again, this is technically through the end of last year, but we did note those minor changes, and we're going to reach out to the codifier about those administrative positions. So thanks for the notation, though.
And we have, that next code update will include the updated list of officials. It's kind of a point in time issue.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from council? Anne, did we have any public comments submitted?
We did not have any public comments submitted.
Very good. Thank you. And Sue, have we received anything online?
No public comments online.
Very good. Well, this too will be scheduled for second reading on April 27th, which will bring us to ordinance 12-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to accept a sanitary sewer easement from Carmen Michael Villapoto for property owned and located at 7685 Dublin Plain City Road, Franklin County parcel number 27400145300.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll have a staff report from Paul Hamersnow.
We need to introduce.
For the council.
Introduction, I'm sorry. Christina, for any introduction? Paul, please.
Good evening, members of council. Urban Air is a development for the construction of two buildings for entertainment and recreation uses and associated site improvements on two previously vacant parcels located at 7685 Dublin City, Dublin Plain City Road. The development is being constructed in two phases. The first phase is located on a parcel, the Franklin County parcel, and I'm just going to read the sixth and ninth digits of the parcel number, and then I'll give it abbreviation afterwards, but parcel number 2136, we'll call that the Western parcel. And the second phase is being constructed on Franklin County parcel number 1453, which would be the Eastern parcel. Existing public sanitary sewers located near the East property line of the Command Elcon site, located at 6750 Crosby Court, that is directly west of the Western parcel. Public sanitary sewer has been extended in order to provide sewer service to the urban air development. For the public sanitary sewer extension, the city requires a permanent sanitary sewer easement on the Western parcel, presently owned by Carmen Michael Villapoto. This will provide for a perpetual easement and for the perpetual maintenance of the public sanitary sewer constructed as part of the urban air development. Mr. Villapoto is conveying the easement to the city at no cost, is responsible for all construction costs of the sanitary sewer improvements associated with the urban air development. Staff is recommending adoption of this ordinance at the second reading and public hearing on April 27th. Be glad to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments, council? Paul, I have just one for you then. We had received an email through the, I believe it was through the contact city council portal some time ago about drainage issues and a couple of other things going on out there. Have we been able to resolve those?
We are working on those presently. Our construction inspection staff has been working with the site superintendent and their surveyor to get elevations out there and get that resolved. And then, once we, you know, get it, understand how to get it resolved, which really isn't that difficult, we need the weather conditions to cooperate, get it so it dries out and some site work can be done. But I'm confident that we can get that corrected for the neighbor.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anne, have we received any comments?
No, we have not.
And Sue, have we received any through the web?
No public comments.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, this too will be scheduled for second reading on April 27th, which brings us to resolutions. First resolution this evening is 22-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the signalized intersection upgrade Phase 2 project.
Very good. Thank you. Stick with Paul, I guess, here for our presentation.
Once again.
Introduction.
Is there an introduction?
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Christina.
Members of council, on March 26th of this year, two bids were received and publicly opened and read by engineering staff for the signalized intersection upgrade Phase 2 project. This project will upgrade hardware and signal equipment at two intersections, the Avery-Mirfield Drive at Perimeter Loop Road and Hospital Drive intersection, and then secondarily at France Road at Laser Parkway Long Branch Drive intersection. The engineers estimate for this work was $248,000. In the CIP, there were $250,000 budgeted for this project. US Utility Contracting Company Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid of $265,842.41. Certainly, that's slightly over our estimate. Going through the bid, the biggest difference in the bid as submitted was in the maintaining traffic as per planned line item. And staff did review that bid thoroughly. Staff participates construction on this project to begin in mid-April this year and is expected to be complete December 18th of this year. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the bid submitted by US Utility Contracting Company Incorporated and determined it to be a complete and acceptable cost to perform this specified work. and determined it to be a complete and acceptable cost to perform this specified work for this project. Our previous experience with this contractor has certainly been favorable. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting the lowest and best bid of US Utility Contractor Company Incorporated. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Jane has a question.
Paul, just out of curiosity, because the Waterford neighborhood would be interested in the upgrades at Long Branch in France, and since the construction drawings were in the council planning room and not easily accessible right now, is it, and I noticed it's for accessibility. Could you just tell us what that upgrade is?
We'll actually be changing the pedestrian, the pedestrian buttons at the intersection and going with our current standard. It's both a tactile button, and in this case, it would also be an audible button.
Okay.
Patient. Well, that's probably the biggest difference.
Okay.
Terms of accessibility.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, when you say audible button, does that mean that the voice will come on when it tells a pedestrian when it's safe to walk? Or you can audibly request to cross?
It'll be the audible indicator that it's safe to walk.
Very good. Any other questions for Paul? No. And did we receive any questions prior to the meeting?
We did not receive any public testimony for this item.
Very good. Thank you. And Sue, did we receive any on the web?
No public comments or questions on the web.
Very good. Then I suppose, Anne, would you please call roll?
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Your amorous grooms.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Resolution 23 dash 20.
This is approving and accepting the final plat for the corner subdivision. Introduction?
Paul, introduce.
Thank you, John. And I just wanted to, if anyone downloaded any materials ahead of time, it was listed at one point as a preliminary plat, but it is a final plat, and all of that material has been corrected accordingly. So Claudia, I believe, is going to present to us this evening, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council, and I will start my presentation. From the beginning, apologize for that. Resolution 2320 is for the corners. It is a final plat as the mayor corrected from the published agenda, and it is for the subdivision of twenty four acres. Here outlined in yellow is the area that is encompassed in this final plat and is bounded on the south side by Rings Road, on the east side by France Road, and on the north side by Blazer Parkway. The zoning was approved for the eastern portion of the site in December by city council, and the western portion of the site retains the current zoning of O L R. Staff provided this overview of the plat to explain a little bit more in detail what all the lots entail. So Lot One, which is outlined in green, is, as I mentioned, the smart parking lot, which is used by Cardinal Health currently, and will also continue to be owned by the city of Dublin. Lot Two and Lot Three both will be part of the corners development and are zoned P U D as part of the corners, where Lot Two will accommodate the future public park, and is also accommodating the two existing retention ponds. And then Lot Three will be the commercial development that is known as the corners. And we have been asked staff working with the applicant to move forward with the first phase or the first two phases potentially of final development plans on those two parcels. And then here is a view of the actual plat where the orientation changes, and north is to the left of your screen. It just fits better on the plat pages that way. We do have a condition that we are still continuing to work on, which entails this area. If you can see my cursor, there used to be a retention pond in this particular area, which is no longer there, and there are some easements associated with that, and we are still working with the owners of those easements to vacate those, and that will be done through a different instrument. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended acceptance to city council of this final plat on March 5th with two conditions. The first one is our typical plat condition that the applicant ensured that all minor technical adjustments are made prior to city council's submittal, which has taken place. And then the second condition is that the city coordinate the vacation of the retention easement south, in the southeast portion of the site, which, as I just mentioned, will take a little bit more work on the city's part and also will be done through a different instrument. So with that, the recommendation of this final plat is for approval and acceptance.
Very good. Thank you. How much, I'll give you a minute to exit your.
Thank you.
Okay, I can see you all. So questions and comments from council?
Claudia, we're still keeping the retention bases. We're just getting rid of some easements that are.
That retention basin actually does not exist anymore. It used to be in that corner of the site, but with the smart parking lot, two new retention easement, retention basins were installed, and that retention basin was removed. When that took place, unfortunately, the easements over the basin were not vacated.
Claudia, the location of the retention basin now will be on city property, right? That is part of the parkland portion of this development, so we will retain the underlying land under the retention basin, just the retention basin. It moved north and west from that corner.
Correct. Yes, the park and the retention basin will be city property.
Other questions, comments? Jane, yes, please.
It's really not concerning the plat, because I think the plat is fine. It's just a comment that as we move forward, because we have two entities designing the corners, the Daimler Group and then the city with the park, and then they are doing the construction, that I am sure that this is the case, but the hope is, is that that, working together to create that park space that incorporates well with the new development is done sort of in partnership, and I know.
We have, but, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Biweekly meetings.
Yeah. Is that the case, Claudia? Is that?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fox. We do have biweekly meetings with the Daimler team, and then also Parks and Recreation and Engineering from the city every Thursday at one o'clock, and we're working through all of those details every other week, and we've done it virtually now as well.
Okay, that's good, because I know that the neighborhood was really looking forward to this new space and very interested in how that, how the park and all of that will be incorporated with it. So I know that that's something that, you know, we'd like to see working together, and if possible, even some public input possibly.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from council? And did we receive any comments prior to the meeting?
No, we have not received any comments.
Very good. And Sue, have we received any live stream?
No comments or questions online.
Very good. Thank you. That being said, Anne, would you please call a roll?
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Your amorous grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to resolution 24 dash two zero.
Approving and accepting the final plat for University Boulevard Phase Two right-of-way dedication and subdivision. Need an introduction?
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Christina, and Claudia is going to present to us as well, so please, Claudia. Your microphone is muted, Claudia. If you'd like to hit the restart button.
Perfect. Thank you. Resolution 2420 for University Boulevard Phase Two was also reviewed and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on March the 5th. Here's an outline of the site. It's a hundred and one acres. On the south side is Shire Rings Road, north side is US 33, and then Idorman Road on the west there. The zoning for this site includes primarily ID One in the West Innovation District, which is the Office Research District, and then city council also in November approved the rezoning for the OSU Wexner Medical Center to Plan Unit Development District, which will be one of the parcels as part of this plat. Primarily, the plat is for the right-of-way for University Boulevard, and it is that piece that is ending at Idorman Road right here, shown in red, and then starting approximately where the I and Shire Rings is on the bottom there. And that is to accommodate development within this area that I've shown outlined in yellow that is owned by the city. And this particular graphic here shows how this piece ties into the regional roadway network as outlined partially and primarily in the thoroughfare plan for the West Innovation District. We also created a graphic to show the plat in an overview way so that you get a better sense of what all is part of this plat. So in purple is University Boulevard, the right-of-way for that, for that roadway. And then there are five lots. Part of this plat, in particular, Lot Five, was a remnant parcel that city council approved a variance for during the preliminary plat process to be smaller than what the requirement is in the code, which would be three acres, and it's a little over one point five, under, I should say. And then Lot Two is the largest parcel within this plat, which is the one that will be conveyed to OSU upon the creation of this lot. Upon the approval of this plat, I should say. And then the plat consists of five sheets. I put them here, but I didn't put the title sheet in because it's pretty funky, but you can see here all the different parcels that we had put together on that previous slide just to make it a little bit easier to see what we're all talking about. So with that, we only have one condition that was carried over from the Planning and Zoning Commission approval, which was, as I say, our typical minor technical adjustment condition, which the applicant has taken care of prior to submitting it to city council. So with that, I am able to answer any questions, and I believe Paul might have some insight, too, if it gets too technical.
Very good. Thank you. Questions from council? Yes, Jane?
Just the one question, Claudia, concerning the easement between one and two. That easement is to accommodate. Could you explain that?
Yes. It stems from a conversation that Planning Commission and City Council had during the rezoning for the OSU Medical Center and the desire to have more public paths weaving in and out to the OSU property from the roadway. So the way OSU has accommodated that is that they have paths actually on both sides of their site to the east and to the west, and they're meandering a bit on their side and a bit off their side. And so in discussions with the city, it was decided that they would be publicly accessible, and it would be appropriate that they would not all have to be accommodated on the OSU site. So the easements take care of the details of the location of those, of those paths, and there will be landscaping as well.
Knowing that, and that it's an easement and that it's public use, it's, there's never going to be a problem with it being that the walkway is on private property, but being able to be used by the public. I think that was the question at Planning and Zoning, but that was cleared up, and the understanding is that's a public walkway, then?
And currently, it is city-owned property on either sides. So when those sales were to take place, that would obviously be an upfront conversation and also a benefit to those developments. And then the applicant for OSU has also provided us with declarations that will be recorded in conjunction with the plat and referenced on the plat. So with that document, it also clarifies that intended use.
Okay, that's great. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions, comments? Okay. Anne, have we, did we receive any comments prior to the meeting?
I know we've not received any public testimony for this item.
Very good. Thank you. And Sue, have we received any live stream?
No public comments or questions online.
Very good. Thank you. And Anne, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Your amorous grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, well, that gets us through the bulk of our agenda over and out to other staff comments. I know Dana has a number of things for us there.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of council, and thanks for the chance to make a few comments this evening. A first thank you to you, city council, for your leadership and support as this pandemic crisis has unfolded. Staff and I appreciate your support and engagement throughout this situation. Also, thank you to our public, our residents, for their cooperation with the governor's stay-at-home order. We understand the hardship this causes, but we appreciate their assistance, their cooperation, and understanding as we've taken actions here locally to support compliance. I also want to say thanks for the outpouring of support our residents have shown, their expressions of appreciation to our Dublin staff, essential employees, and first responders. The little things like chalking or providing thank you signs at the entryways to our city facilities means more than they could probably ever know. Most of all, thank you to our public for, most importantly, taking care of each other. I want to assure city council and our public that Dublin staff remains engaged and on the job. We've been and will likely continue to be for a while in emergency management mode. We're providing all essential services while still gaining the necessary physical separation to ensure the overall health of our workforce, which, by the way, as of our emergency management briefing this morning, everyone is very healthy, and we're very fortunate for that. We hope it continues to stay that way. Our employees have been phenomenal, and I'm very proud of their commitment to serve under these circumstances. A special thanks to Washington Township Fire and EMS for all that they are doing as well. And thank you especially to Eric Richter, Washington Township Administrator, and Fire Chief Alec O'Connell. They have been involved and engaged every day in our emergency management process and our meetings and our daily updates. Of course, we're always Velcroed at the hip, I like to call it, and try to operate very seamlessly on the street, but in these kind of circumstances, it's great that they're involved and engaged every day with us, and we're keeping each other up to date on how we're both progressing. It's been amazing to watch our community partners, such as Dublin City Schools, who, by the way, contributed a great supply of PPE to our local hospital, to Washington Township Fire and EMS, and to the city, and for what they continue to do, provide children in their community with reduced and free lunch programs. And the same thanks also to Hilliard City Schools. Thanks to, also to Dublin Chamber, Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, Centaro, the Dublin Food Pantry, Dublin Bridges, Dublin Foundation, the Life Care Alliance, Meals on Wheels, Sourcepoint, Home Helpers, leaders of the various faith communities throughout our Dublin community, the senior living centers throughout Dublin, our Forever Dublin Partners, homeowner associations, and the Share Mobility Company, and also the Dublin Arts Council, and really many more. I'm sure there's some I've left out for all their great effort. It's been a great partnership with them, and it's going to be that partnership that will get us through this and make sure that we are able to keep a pulse on the needs of our community members and respond as necessary. And all those groups that I mentioned are communicating weekly in joint telephone calls and conferences to make sure that we're keeping that pulse. So as you can expect from any emergency or disaster situation, there are responsibilities and missions that evolve, and some you probably can never anticipate, and that's the case here, and we have been and remain agile to respond to whatever those needs may be. And that's the case here and we have been and remain agile to respond to whatever those needs may be. And we all know this crisis has and will have an impact on our businesses and we are reaching out to understand that as much as possible and we appreciate their participation and, uh, cooperation on that. We've also been working with our Dublin Chamber and I want to thank them, uh, for their partnership in, uh, trying to understand what that means as well, as well as, um, uh, also, uh, helping us and helping businesses to understand what the state and federal assistance is that's being offered. So we're all, we're working together to make sure our businesses can access that information as efficiently as possible. Likewise, likewise, we know this crisis, um, is and will have a significant economic impact as was, uh, mentioned earlier. And we are doing the best we can to estimate what we think that it, that impact might be. I've shared with council a memo speaking to our initial actions to prepare for that impact. And we'll brief council at your April twenty-seventh council meeting on what we know to date. The best we know to be our assumptions going forward and again, some of the actions to consider, uh, to respond budgetarily while balancing essential services, balancing maintenance needs and also capital needs. So this is an evolving situation, so I can guarantee that as soon as we brief it on the twenty-seventh, it'll probably change. But we'll do our best to, uh, to give you the latest and greatest. But at least we'll start down a path together between staff and city council to sustain our fiscal health, accountability and our economic vitality, again, while delivering the services that our residents expect. So as council knows, and I appreciate the mayor's opening comments, these are certainly unprecedented times. First time we've ever done a council meeting like this. But just want to, uh, remind everyone that we had a planned, um, lull in activity. We actually, our last council meeting was March sixteenth and we were not scheduled to have another council meeting until tonight. So give yourselves a pat on the back for not missing a beat on that and, uh, to pull this together. And I want to thank our IT staff for making this possible. I also want to thank council for their patience in putting this together. And also want to just, uh, reach out to our residents who, who may be watching or watch this later and say if you have any comments regarding improvements or better ways to be engaged, you know, we certainly welcome that feedback so that we can serve you the best that we possibly can. So again, just thank you for letting me, uh, make a few comments and bring you up to speed on where I think we're at. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those. Thank you.
Uh, Dan, I sure do want to thank you. As you mentioned, our partnerships with the schools and the township and, and our neighbors like Hilliard and, uh, you know, been on a lot of these calls lately. Um, I spent more time on Zoom than I, than I care to, but, that's not everyone's situation. We are really fortunate to have such great partners. And, um, so I think that goes to say, you know, the hard work that's been done for a lot of years by a lot of people to, to build those solid relationships. So thank you for that and, and, um, that information. Anything else from you? Is that all? Okay, um. I'll wait for roundtable for a few other things. We'll call, I'll run through for committee reports. I realize that, as Dana mentioned, we had a natural break due to, um, spring break and Easter. So many of these committees have not met, but, um, I want to take a minute to offer up our opportunity to report. And so, uh, Jane, the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Nothing to report.
Very good. Thank you. Christina Admin, I'm sorry, Kathy Admin?
Nothing to report. We'll meet, uh, later this month.
Very good. Um, Community Development Committee, John?
Uh, nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Finance Committee, Christina?
Nothing right now.
Public Services, Jane?
Nothing right now.
Uh, Coda Kathy? The microphone is muted.
There we go. Thank you. I would like to, to take a moment, Mayor, to, um, offer my thanks really to the hard work of the hundreds of Coda staff who have throughout this crisis continued to offer service to thousands of people, days, nights and weekends. And that has been, um, heroic work and I wanted to take an opportunity to thank them for that. Um, and I also wanted to mention that, um, in the continued work to, in the best everyone can to create safety and, um, good health for both the passengers, the customers and the, um, operators of the transportation's effective this Wednesday. Um, they're asking all customers who ride a Coda bus to wear a face mask. It could be a scarf or a handkerchief. Um, and that seems to be following suit that what we're seeing, uh, uh, across many services is based on the CDC recommendations, that this is just one additional step we could do to keep everybody healthy. So again, I just wanted to, um, thank, um, Team Coda for, for continuing to be a vital resource for folks so that they can get to the essential services. So thanks for the opportunity to make that update.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Nothing at this time.
Uh, for the Mid Ohio, for Morpsy, the Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission, I, um, there have been lots of meetings. I don't have updates other than the ones that you have been seeing in terms of dashboard and, and things like that. So I believe that you are all up to date on those issues. Uh, Logan Union Champagne County?
Nothing to report.
Okay, um, thirty-three corridor Kathy and Jane?
I'll, I'll make a quick comment. We had a meeting virtually, um, last Friday. And, um, I have to say, it has been, um, so fantastic to have the opportunity to, um, sit around the virtual table and, and talk to so many of our friends and colleagues as we're working through this. So Union County, Marysville, Jerome Township, Mill Creek, um, and listening to everybody offer each other support and help and anything they can do to keep things moving. It was just, it was really great to see everybody. Um, I can also report and, and Jane, please add to this. Um, you'd like that, um, many of the projects are still moving ahead and the developers and, uh, owners are looking to the future. And so those are positive things. Certainly it doesn't mean that they won't be without delays, but it was just really nice to see as a community, um, that we're, you know, we're, we're going to move ahead and we'll move forward through this and continue to work together. So it was just really a nice opportunity to see all of our neighboring, um, uh, municipalities working together. So I don't know if Jane, if you wanted to add anything to that.
Uh, the only thing I would add is, as you said Kathy, that, that they are moving forward with projects. And I think the people in those, in the area up along the corridor would probably be interested in seeing some of the roadway improvements that are going to be happening with all this in increasing development that's going on. So maybe at the next, uh, opportunity, we can maybe show some illustrations of some of the roadway improvements so that the folks in the, in those areas, especially up north of Dublin, might see what the improvements are going to be.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Arts Council, John?
Yeah, uh, the Dublin Arts Council, uh, would love to thank all those people who got their chalk out and put positive messages up and down our sidewalks, uh, that Dana just alluded to and the great art that happened out there. And I, I got to compliment Dave. Him and I had early discussions on reductions in the, uh, hotel tax, uh, and bed tax. And he immediately moved and met with the, uh, Finance Department and Dublin Arts Council to start looking at budgetary cuts and I think he came up with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And I think he met with, uh, Dana on, on a Wednesday after that. But I, I want to applaud his, uh, quick action for trying to, um, right the ship in case things get tougher. So, um, I want to again thank, uh, Dave Goyan, our director. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Dublin Board of Education, Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just one quick thing. The Dublin City Schools and the Dublin Food Pantry are conducting a food drive uh, tomorrow, the fourteenth and Thursday, the sixteenth. And then again, next week on Tuesday, the twenty-first and, uh, Thursday, April twenty-third, they're asking for items to be dropped off to the Eli Penny Vestibule. Um, they're asking for the items that you would sort of expect spaghetti, box pasta, canned soup, canned goods, canned vegetables, toothpaste, toothbrushes. There's a list on the, um, school's website. It's a really great way for people to, to make a difference and help out those families in our community. They're getting especially hit hard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Washington Township, Jane?
Yes, um, spoke to the chief today and he says that, um, right now stationed, everybody is good. Things are going well, good plans in place. Um, he says runs are down a little bit, which is, which is good. Uh, everybody's staying at home and seeming somewhat safe. Any protective equipment, um, that can be donated, both for fire and police. He requested that we, they did receive quite a bit earlier, but they're, they're always welcome. So that's something that if the public has any more protective equipment, they'd appreciate that. But most importantly, they wanted to say how appreciative they are of everything that the public has done. People have dropped off things. They have left notes. They have, um, been so kind. And he couldn't, he couldn't express enough the appreciation of the fire department for all the work that the community and efforts that community has done to make them feel valued. And I know the police department, I'm sure Dana is, it's probably true, the police feel that way too. So, um, keep them in your prayers and, uh, and I think, uh, right now, everything seems to be going fairly well.
Very good. Thank you. I'll stick with you with Dublin Bridges.
Okay, Dublin Bridges, um, they've been really very busy during this time. Um, I would suggest that, um, there are so many people on Nextdoor and, um, I'm sure on our website that have been interested in helping the community. Just log on to Dublin, um, to neighborhoodbridges.org. Um, go to the menu on Dublin. There is a list of a variety of ways that the community can help. And, uh, it's a one-stop place. One of the things Bridges is doing right now is providing bags to go along with the Dublin lunch snacks that are going out for free lunches. So I would just say to the community, if you want to help, um, that is a great spot. You will be helping other Dublin members, uh, who are in need right now as long, as well as, uh, they were, they're working in conjunction with the Food Pantry, Welcome Warehouse, the Faith Community, the seniors. Uh, I know Christine Nardakia has been in contact with all of those groups and everybody's working together. So I think by community coming forward and bringing some of their efforts to the stage with these partners, we should be able to meet as many needs as we possibly can.
Great. Thank you. Um, Veterans Committee, John?
Uh, no, all the meetings have been canceled as have all the lectures at the Rec Center.
Uh, incomplete count, Christina. I know that we saw some numbers on how we were doing, um, but I'm sure you have an update for us.
I do, I do. Thank you. Um, so right now, from, uh, census numbers perspective, the, right now nationwide, the response rate is at forty-seven point nine percent. In Ohio, it's a little bit higher at fifty-one point six. In Dublin specifically, we're at sixty-five point one percent. Uh, so that's pretty good. Where, um, you can actually take a look online. They have, um, a, a map that you can look at as far as where response rates are. Our lowest response rate in the city is sort of the south end of the city. So I would ask that anyone, um, who can, can call up their neighbors or email their neighbors and make sure that they've responded to the census. Um, you can respond online. Everyone would, should have received a postcard with your specific number of being able to log online and do your census questionnaire, which is really, really easy, by the way. You can also do it by mail. You can do it over the phone as well. And then the address, uh, and the phone number are all listed on the census website. So, um, I know that it's tough, tough right now. People are not really thinking about the census amid all of the pandemic crisis, but it's actually incredibly important, um, for Ohio and our region to obtain the funding that, that we need to do, the things that we need to do. And the only way to do that is through the census and to make sure that everyone is counted. Um, so I would really strongly urge folks to call their neighbors and email their neighbors. Please don't go knock on doors right now, but call people, email people, get the word out there. Make sure folks are, are paying attention to the census and who knows, maybe it'll give them something to distract them and something to do while they're all at home.
Very good. Thank you. Um, well, that will bring us to council roundtable. I would usually start on my far left and if I, I'm stretched my memory here, uh, and I will start with Mr. Keeler.
So, uh, I really just have a question for Kathy about Coda. Um, there's been a lot in the, in the news about, uh, public transit struggling through this nationwide. And my question is, is it too early to tell what, where Coda stands now and where they might stand in a month or two with respect to this?
Are, are your question related to service, Andy, or financially or both?
Financially.
Yeah, um, uh, as you may or may not know, um, uh, the vast majority of Coda's funding comes from a sales tax. About ten percent of Coda's funding comes from ridership. And as you're probably aware, um, I, I, it all runs together now, but I think it's about two weeks ago that Coda announced that it's free, fares are free for essential travel, which is what they're conducting now. So certainly there is a change in revenue stream there and, um, e- exactly the right thing to do for the community. Um, sales tax will, i- i- it's been a very interesting thing. Some, um, sales continue to be healthy along essential services and then others, you know, as, as it relates to certainly ret, um, tourism, et cetera, decline. Um, they, just like the city, are actively working on that. Um, we will have a board meeting next week. But, um, I think it suffices to say that everyone will, will need some financial support and help and, um, looking at all different areas to, to help continue to, to bring that service forward. I would say one of the other things, um, that Coda has been working very hard to do is to be responsive to that service in the areas that it needs most. So certainly it is, as most bus systems are, are, you know, fixed route type systems, but have worked and worked very hard to be dynamic and to be where the service is needed. So, um, I think they're working hard on a, as much cost control as they can be. But, um, for sure as they come out, they'll, I like many essential services are, are going to have a funding struggle. So, thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Um, my only other comment is if you're getting tired of, uh, eating in and cooking, order out. The locally owned, uh, owned and operated restaurants, the ones that I've talked to, their revenues are down about eighty percent. And they're really going to be the victims, uh, in, in this and could use all the help you can get. So, uh, if you, if you are tired of cooking, order out. It's, it's so easy. We do it maybe three days a week, four days a week, um, any way we can to support those local businesses. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, Jane?
Um, yes, well, first off, um, I want to thank Dana for working twelve-hour days.
Well, that's underestimated.
I know. Well, I heard him say twelve-hour days earlier, so I'm just quoting him. But, um, you know, it's amazing how we got up and running so quickly. I know we had a pandemic plan on the shelf that you pulled out that's, that gave you a, a tool, but I, I think that you can have all kinds of plans in paper. But it takes, uh, the kind of, uh, leadership that you've been showing and the partnerships and the communication has been excellent, uh, in letting us know how things are going. So I think the city and council, at least, uh, I, I know we all feel this way, that you've done a, a yeoman's job. So, thank you for that.
I'll pass that on to the team too. Thank you.
And Chris needs a, a shout out for being recently elected, uh, Secretary of the Executive Committee of Morpsy. So congratulations, Chris. So, um, so that's pretty much. I hope it all stays well and, uh, I'm, I'm right now, um, recruiting some sewers for some masks. So if anybody wants to volunteer, I've got a, I've got a hundred and twenty-five masks that need to be made. So anybody who wants to sew or cut fabric, call me up.
I can cut, but I cannot sew, but.
Okay, I'll put you to work.
Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, the only comment I have, Mayor, is to, uh, to Dana and, and our staff and particularly the IT folks who got this whole operation up and running, um, over a, a pretty quick turnaround. Um, and, and the staff, Dana, and, and the work that you've done, we get a tremendous amount of information, uh, from you on a daily basis about what this community is doing to, uh, keep us moving forward. And I know that's a, a, an enormous amount of work that you do every single day and you've got a fantastic staff behind you with this heavy lift. So, uh, we couldn't have any better person, uh, in charge of our response to this situation. And the staff that you have assembled is really fantastic. I just, uh, please pass along our appreciation.
Thank you. I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, but I would echo all of my appreciation to Dana and to, to staff for everything they're doing. Um, I, I have to say that I love the videos that you've been putting, like the, the DCRC video that's out on the website now. Um, I've actually received several really positive comments about them. So keep them coming. People seem to really like them. It's, it helps them to steal, feel, uh, block, feel connected, um, in, in ways that are sometimes difficult to do when you're stuck at home. Um, a shout out to the schools. I know, um, I've probably got the youngest little one in school right now. They're really doing a tremendous job at helping to try to keep those kids feel engaged. It's a challenge. I can tell you firsthand, it is a challenge. Um, so thanks to all the parents for being patient with yourselves to, and being patient with your kids. Thanks to all the kids who are out there just trying to get their work done so they can get through the year. Um, certainly my heart goes out to seniors. Certainly, my heart goes out to seniors and fifth graders and those who are missing some milestones at the end of those chapters. But boy, will it give you a story to tell your grandkids. That's what I'm telling my kids. And then just a reminder to folks to reach out to your neighbors, especially the elderly. You know, I have older parents, as many of you know, in the community, and they look so forward to FaceTiming with my kids and my sister's kids. It's so important to them. So even just a phone call to a neighbor that you know is by themselves would be tremendously helpful. It is really difficult for people to be so isolated. Or even to call a friend, maybe whose parent is in a nursing facility, and they can't go visit them. It's really hard on folks when they cannot connect with their loved ones who are either in those facilities or are sick. Just those human connections are incredibly important. So I would encourage folks to go out and do that as well. Thank you so much. Chris, thanks for your leadership tonight. Thank you to my fellow council members. This is not the easiest thing to do online, but I think it's gone really, really well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
Again, I want to echo the words of thanking Dana and the staff and the courage it takes to get out and get this job done. We should be immensely proud of our folks. I agree with Andy. If there's any way, support local businesses. You keep people working, you keep people on jobs. It's really, really important. Special thanks to the Order Malta. Out of Dublin came 4,000 sandwiches that were made. If we think about, a lot of the kitchen food places for the poor have been closed, and people living under bridges that really don't have food downtown. That group really, in two days, backed out a huge amount of sandwiches, many of which entered refrigeration. So very proud of them and trying to help the poor in our area. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Kathy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dana. Thank you, team. I mean, you can't see the folks that are watching this, all the people behind the screen that we're seeing here to support us during this meeting and really have supported really the entire community through this. It really is heroic effort, and I thank you for that. Thanks to many people. I also wanted to do a shout out to our healthcare heroes that are just doing amazing things around the country. I have a daughter that works in the healthcare industry, and it's just fantastic what they're doing. And to say thank you, and to Dr. Brain, who's been giving us wonderful Q and As and for a variety of things from our own local wonderful Ohio health facility here. So thank them very much. And for the folks at the grocery stores that are there smiling every time we come in to take care of all of the needs as we continue to try to keep things going. So so many people to thank, don't need to reiterate everything, but just to add some of the additional ones. And then the other thing that I think has been so amazing through this is just the overall absolute kindness of anybody you happen to walk anywhere near, if you're on a walking path or if you're in the grocery store. If I've heard, are you okay? What can I do to help? I overhear that to say to anybody else. When I'm out and about, it is amazing. It's just a wonderful community that we live in. So thanks to the residents for just being there for each other through this. So thank you all.
Well, I certainly couldn't have said all that better than the way you all did. So thank you for those comments, and I echo all of them. I would like to mention Christine Nardekia has been helping with putting together a blood drive for our Nick Butler, who is battling COVID-19 at Children's, and our thoughts and prayers are with him. And we look forward to the blood drive. It'll be April the 25th at the Dublin United Methodist Church. And you will be seeing more information come out, and I would encourage everyone to go and give blood. That's a wonderful way to encourage him and lift him up and be a great service to the balance of the community, Central Ohio community as well. So I encourage everyone to do that. I have been checking in with Scotty's staff at Dublin United, our Dublin Methodist Hospital, and they are at the ready there. So we have been quite fortunate thus far. You know, as I said before, a couple of times a day on these calls with the governor and senators and congressmen and all of these people, there are a lot of folks out there that are really hurting right now and that are in tremendous crisis, and we certainly really keep our thoughts and prayers with them. And at the same time, be very grateful that we are where we are and we have who we have, that we're taking care of each other to the best of our abilities. So with that, I would just like to check in one last moment with Sue and with Anne. I know that we cut short our public comment for items not on the agenda early. I want to make sure we don't have any other public comments before we close out.
No, Mayor, we did not receive any further public comments tonight.
Very good. And anything online, Sue?
Nothing online.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you. All be safe, be well, and I look forward till we see one another again.